What are you up to?
I have one minute, yeah, 5:29. I don't have by the second. We still have the clock that's broken in here, don't we? The August 20th, 2024 meeting of the City Council is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lesko, could you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Notteriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Connelly.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Present.
Mayor Buscher, Aquormas present.
Thank you, Clerk Lesko. The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2024-026 for the property located at 203 North Glenwood Avenue. However, I believe the petitioner, Aaron Dean Properties LLC, has a written request to withdraw the petition as submitted to the zoning administrator. Therefore, the petition for this particular item is hereby withdrawn. Even though the petition has been withdrawn, there is someone who did sign up to speak on this item, which would be Kurt DeWes. Mr. DeWes, would you still like to speak? Okay, go on up.
I am Kurt DeWes. I'm here on behalf of the Historic Westside Neighborhood Association. And I did prepare a formal statement, which I will submit to the clerk. I do want to acknowledge that there are others here who were also planning to speak if necessary. I just wanted to reiterate the fact that, as we did in the Planning Commission meetings too, where Planning Commission ultimately denied this petition, we have serious concerns about this petition. We registered them, I think, pretty successfully before the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I would urge you that if this matter would become back to you at another time, that you give our comments serious consideration.
Thank you, Mr. DeWes. Thank you. The individuals behind you, are you okay with that statement then, too? Okay, perfect. Okay. The next item on the agenda is item number 2024-030 for the property located at 3025 Fiat Avenue and part of, and then part, and 1,021 Knox Avenue. The petitioners are H.D. Smith Building LLC. Before I read the zoning classification and the zoning relief, I think I'm going to ask Mike Southworth to come up to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Southworth and Sam Nichols here on behalf of the petitioner. And, you know, simply put, we would like to withdraw the petition this evening and try to work through some issues in the future.
Perfect. So that petition has also been withdrawn. I know there were a series of people who signed up to speak. So I'm just going to say your names, and if you want to speak, please just raise your hand for me. Brad Davis. Jeff Lockbaum. Matthew Kate. Gordon Gates. All right. And that's...
Wow, that's a shout.
Thank you. Gordon, you shocked everyone.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Good job, John. Just did a great job.
That concludes our zoning portion of our meeting at this time. Oh, I do need to inform you, though, that the zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission, at their last meeting, did vote to amend their bylaws. And starting in January of 2025, their meetings will start at 5:30 PM versus 6:00 PM. Same place, but just different time. Same night. Thank you. All right. You're all done? Do I have anyone here from the treasurer? Oh, geez. I was looking.
There she comes.
Okay, the Chair will now recognize Treasurer Redpath Fager for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Buscher. The treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of July. Beginning balance, $51,395,627. We took in total receipts of $16,1,629. We had total disbursements in the month of July totaling $13,780,738, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of July at $53,616,518. The ending general fund balance includes $13,890,792, which is the ARPA ending balance for the month of July. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
Removed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the motion carries. Chair will now recognize the OBM Director, Ramona Metzger, for presentation of any questions on the OBM contract report. Does anyone have questions? All right, seeing none, we will move on. The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the August 7th, 2024 regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
Removed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
Removed, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
Removed. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing... Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor. On 2024-303, I know it is on consent for the Heartland House. And I do see Mr. Sabo. We did speak to him in the elevator, and we just had a few questions for him.
I was going to bring him up when we put it on, if it's going to stay on consent, when we go to consent for discussion for that. Is that okay, Alderman?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. Alderwoman Connelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be noted as present for ordinance 2024-294.
294, Ward 8, present. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
Removed. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now we're worth discussion. So Alderman Gregory brought up 2024-303, which Josh Sabo is here from Heartland House, so we'll let Mr. Sabo come up. Thank you, Josh.
Hi, everyone. I don't have a presentation. I sent a report out to you all last week, but happy to entertain any questions you all have.
Alderman Gregory, any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And this is on consent now, so I don't, a few of my questions would just involve other funding. Are we the only entity that's involved with funding this section of this homeless initiative?
So for Heartland House, when we finished the strategic plan at that point, the city, the county, and capital township committed to providing funding for the organization. So the city's contribution is matched dollar-for-dollar by the county, and then at a 50% rate by capital township.
Okay. So I think it's real important, and we spoke a little bit briefly, for us to really, really, and I read some of the report, I apologize, I didn't read it all, some really tight focus on individuals that are still experiencing homelessness and on the streets. I have one that has basically made his home at the now-closed Family Dollar. Get complaints about that all the time, among other areas in our city, which allow all the people to speak to it. But I really think that is the last step in this thing, is really how do we connect with them. I know you spoke on, some outreach has been done and things. And I think, for me, it will make me feel more comfortable the next time we dish out some funding and to really, really look at a game plan to really put some priority towards it. You know, I compliment Nick Dodson, who does a wonderful job getting people housed. I've worked with him with various individuals. So I tip my hat to the work that we are doing. And that's why I'm asking you to put this task at a priority, because I do know your good work, so I appreciate you.
If I could speak into that for a moment, too. So, you know, when you look at the strategic plan, one of the things that we emphasized was the creation of housing opportunities. Historically, the problem in our community has been that we've had a lot of shelter, not even enough shelter, but there was no exits from shelter to housing. So the emphasis in the last couple of years has really been to create more of those housing opportunities, supportive housing opportunities. In 2019, there were only 90, 95 people exited homelessness to those supportive housing opportunities. Last year, that number was up to 254. So we are having success as a community, increasing the number of families and households entering housing. The issue is for all communities. I mean, homelessness across the country increased by 12% last year. So there's inflow into homelessness. People are experiencing homelessness for the first time. So we have to continuously grow those housing opportunities and the programs around it. Street outreach is a, I completely agree with you, is a crucial emphasis right now. Earlier this year, starting in February, we did a 100-day challenge on unsheltered homelessness. There's, in that report, one thing I just do want to point out to you, you know, there's an article that really kind of dives into the work that was done there, because historically, it's been a weakness, and it's still not anywhere near as strong as we want it to be as a community. But during those 100 days, we were able to house 29 people with a history of unsheltered homelessness, and then identify gaps. And so part of that is just coordination. There's a lot of volunteer efforts that go out and connect with people that are experiencing homelessness. A lot of organizations might have one person here, or, you know, another person, another organization that's doing it. And so really increasing the amount of time all those workers spend together. So every other week, we've got hour-long case conferencing meetings, right? The goal is to create a by-names list of every person experiencing homelessness. And then at those meetings, they're talking about, okay, I reached out to this person. Their next step they're working on is an ID. Or this person wants to get on our coordinated entry list, which is the pathway to housing. This person's interesting, interested in some other, maybe they're interested in rehab, or they want a mental health consultation. So that's what those, that group is doing. The reality is we, and what we're trying to do right now is pursue additional grants to hire more street outreach people and bring some of those onto our team, so that we have more energy going out to do that work and continuously engage folks. You know, the Springfield Police Department has the hot team, so Officer Newman and Shannon do a fantastic job. But it's hard for them to go out everywhere, right, as they're getting those referrals from the police department. We've worked for the last 18 months with the Springfield Police Department on the SEED Initiative, which really is intended to work in that deflection space. So how can we, how can we get street outreach workers and case managers out there in the community so that contact is with them and the police are not having to respond? And as a community, those resources can go elsewhere. And so that effort, at times, it's funded through the police department. It's had, at times, four deflection specialists there. And so that, and that's, you know, it's still getting its legs underneath it, but that's the type of effort that we're continuing to try to grow, and the goal's relentless engagement. If a person's not ready today to take the next step, we need to engage them tomorrow and the day after that, and then keep doing it. And we don't have the power to move people. It's not, you know, our services are all voluntary, you know? So it's really about relationship building, trust building, and trying to grow those opportunities so that when a person is ready, we can help them take that step.
Anything else, Alderman Gregory?
No.
Okay. Alderwoman Connelly.
Thank you, Mayor. And Josh, thank you. You actually, I think, covered the 100 days and the SEED Initiative, but I was hoping you would speak to that. If you could, just briefly, I know we had some new housing that was opened last spring, a year ago?
Fall, yes.
Was it fall, last fall? The days fly by quickly. So what's the, what's the capacity at that location on Park Street? How many?
There's 22 units there. Eleven of those are two bedrooms, so those have...
How many of those are filled right now?
I believe they might be all full, but I, there's fluctuation at times, so I couldn't, I couldn't say that with certainty. But I believe those are all full at this point.
And the last I heard, we're not really getting complaints about that area or issues with residents living there. It seems to be going fairly well?
I hope that continues to be the case, and I've not heard anything recently. But, you know, but I know, anytime in those types of situations, transportation, those types of things are the key questions. And I know the case managers are working really hard to address those needs for the clients there.
Thank you. And thank you for coming in tonight for the detailed report that you sent. It was a lot of information.
Sorry about that.
No, don't apologize. That's what we asked for. And, you know, it is a concern that continues to be, you know, a major issue in the community. And we've talked a number of times about different, you know, kind of other ideas that we can get out there. But certainly appreciate your time and the work that you and your organization and all of our, you know, frontline service providers bring to this community. So thank you very much. Please share our appreciation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you. Josh, I just want to back up just a little bit when you said, "Address the gap." So as you know, on Fifth and North Grand, it's about 30 or 40 of individuals that come together, hang out. Sometimes they're in the street, sometimes they're on the sidewalk, sometimes they're in the parking lot. But they get so big that they overcrowd that area. And most of them, like you said, have housing. But I guess I'm not understanding the gap that we're missing to not have them hanging out right there. Or, you know, I've even, me and a couple of the other businesses have paid them just to make sure they keep the area cleaned up, because it gets so bad.
Right.
Can you address that a little bit? Because that's something that I get calls daily about.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, in that scenario, again, that's a frequent point of outreach from all of our outreach workers. So the folks there that we know are without housing, there are people that are working to kind of address those needs and help people know what the next step is and help them take that next step. You know, beyond that, in terms of folks congregating and staying in that space, you know, again, our job is to make services accessible as possible and relentless engagement, continually building those relationships and trying to help them move into a more stable housing situation that wouldn't be located there. Beyond that, there's really, there's really not a lot that's within our control in terms of the decisions that people make and how that gets enforced at a public level.
You all are doing a good job, but I guess that, from what you just said, I guess the bug stops there, and we still haven't figured out how to address it, and now it's getting larger. These individuals used to hang out on Sixth and Carpenter, and we was able to move them from over there. Today, on my way home, it was about three there before I came to City Council. But now they have moved over to Fifth and North Grand. And I'm really afraid that someone is going to get hurt, because when you start laying in the street, I take pictures and send it to our SPD leadership to ask, can we get somebody out there right away? We've put up the eye in the sky and put it like right next to them, so that it kind of MPs on space and say, hey, you may need to move from here, but nothing is really working. And I'm just at a loss at this point in telling my neighborhood associations, I don't know what else we can do.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of that sounds like public safety questions, you know? Like, our mission, our job, is to do everything we can for the folks that are homeless there, working to access other community services, to make those accessible and help them move in that direction. But we, nothing's compulsory that, within our, within our space and our work.
Thank you.
But we'll continue to, the outreach will continue as long as folks are there, and we'll continue to try to help people get to better spots.
Thank you. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mayor. Josh, I appreciate you coming in. I do have a question, though. I have got, I've got a few individuals that are out in, around some of the strip malls out west. I actually talked to one of them, and I'm like, hey, man, you know, can I call somebody and get you over to the shelter? And his comment to me was, man, I don't do rules. And so, so what do we do? I mean, I guess that's the question. If, you know, what do, I want to get him somewhere where he can get services, but if they refuse, what's our options?
Yeah. In some of those scenarios, if you have a person that's, you know, frequenting a particular area, I'd encourage you to go to heartlandhouse.org, give out my email, you know, call us and make sure that it's on our radar. So, because we map our street outreach efforts, and then we make sure that people are going to all parts of the city where we know folks may be. If a person, and it's not uncommon, for various reasons, that a person may not want to access shelter. And so street outreach is really that key next step, where we can, the goal is to deliver whatever services we can there in terms of, you know, what's your situation, what are you hoping for? Really kind of work on, everything's housing-focused, right? How can we get you, if you're not willing to go to shelter, we can still work. How can we work? What do you need next to help pursue that? So our street outreach workers, the SEED Initiative, you know, those are key, I think, key resources to you. So lean on us, because we can get in touch with those people. We coordinate the outreach. We make sure...
Just contact you guys and have, so that you know. All right. Thank you. That's good to know. Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, some lines are similar to what everyone is saying, but I want to speak to the gap that exists between housing not being a fix. The fix is pretty much mental illness. My facility at, the name fails me now, but right there at, you know, at Ninth and, next to KFC, Ninth and North Grand. You know, studios, the whole building is studios, but they all have a mental illness. They all are on different medicines. They have a manager and a case, but it's that capacity. And so the individuals I'm dealing with, that Sean described and a few others I know, you know, I'm like, Hanauer, I talk to them. I try to say, can I get you, what are we doing? If that's that capacity, does your organization do anything about, maybe there should be a second one? Or that kind of special housing, because, you know, you do have to have these conditions to get in there. And somehow, them mental health people get them in there, because they have capacity. So these few that are still out there, you know, sleeping at the storefronts in different places and kind of are, well, they're sane enough to tell us, I'm not following rules, I don't want to go to the shelter, this and that, but obviously, the way they dress and they behave, we know there's some issues there. So if there's no capacity for them and they don't go to the regular shelter, there they are, you know? And I'm asking, does your organization have plans? Or do you, are you aware, first of all, and do you have plans on what you're going to do as far as housing those type? Because how's, I mean, homelessness is complex, but these are the people that are falling in this mental health gap that I'm speaking to.
Right. And, you know, and that property is perfectly suited, especially because, and now that Envision has taken it over, right? They specialize in mental health. So that's a, for our community, that's a big win. And so, you know, part of our work is trying to recruit new partners in. I mean, Envision is a new partner to our community that delivers services in that mental health space, and we want to see their efforts grow. So a couple of ways that we do that, you know, there's a HUD grant out right now, right? That, so we're encouraging them, apply. Apply for new programs. Apply so you can hire new case managers. Some of that would be scattered site, but then the other part of it is, you know, with the Home Illinois Plan, the work that the state government is doing, there are more resources now for developing additional units of housing in this space than ever before. So when you think about the Mason Street development, we'd love to have one of those come online every year. And so we're recruiting partners like that to say, we know this is a need. And when those units are, you know, 15, 20 in one spot, that really allows them to locate mental health services on-site, which is crucial, right?
Which is what that is, and that's why.
Exactly. So, so when we see a partner like that come into town, you know, and that's an organization that's working to grow in different parts of the state, we're doing everything in our power to say, we need you, your services are needed. And, you know, this is a, this is a priority for us, is, you know, the HUD funding and state funding that we allocate, it's certainly, certainly a high priority, you know, as we allocate those funds. So there's, you know, opportunities for them to grow their, grow their programs in this city, for sure.
Okay, so, and my final question, still relating to this, is, so back in the day, we had the McFarlands and, you know, places like that. And I've been told that's why they're closed, so that these private entities and these other partners can open up these places and do more of a community-based type treatment and all this. And so this is when I'm like, well, I think you need to open it back up, because there ain't no space at the one that I have, at least in Ward 3. I mean, I don't even know if others exist. But do you agree that we probably never go back to the old big McFarland zone type things?
Right. I mean, and McFarland, you know, changed its name to Packard, but, you know, so that facility's still there. But, you know, for example, Envision got a grant to help serve people coming out of Packard into our community. And it's kind of one of those challenges, right? If you eliminate housing for people, but then, you know, if government entities don't replace that in some way, you know, they're accentuating issues like this. So our federal government, you know, state government's certainly stepping up, but we've got to advocate for more resources for these housing opportunities. And I don't think we're going back to large institutionalization. I don't see that, and evidence doesn't suggest that's the best path. But that Hope Springs type of development can be extremely effective, and, but more of those are needed, right? So, so as Envision got a grant to help serve people coming out of Packard, it can serve their mental health needs, but it doesn't serve their housing needs. And housing's a crucial part of that stability in all parts of life. So that's where we, you know, I think that's where we come in and say, okay, well, housing is what we do. Let's try to pursue grants. Let's pursue another development. You know, let's try to do everything we can to help you grow the housing ability alongside those other services that you're offering.
So I appreciate you coming in, and I'm glad that you do realize, or your organization realizes, that housing ain't the fix for all those out there. That it is other types of issues going on that's related to housing, but is even more serious as far as staying on their medicine and doing what they're supposed to do as far as the medical. And that's why Hope Springs was so important, because when I experienced it, I saw the caseworker. I saw the med charts. I saw the tracking of the med, and those guys are doing great. And they feel some self-worth, because it's only a studio apartment, but they have their own domain. Not a shelter, though, see? But it's their own domain that they control, and they live in. They do the basic thing. They go to the family tower next door, across the street, to the cafe. Same thing pretty much every day, but it's better than being what Alderman Purchase is, you know, out on the streets, just laying on the sidewalk, or what Sean has at a couple of storefronts. So I appreciate you.
I'm going to cut that clip, because I think you just said housing is the answer. I think that's what that sounded like to me, Alderman Williams.
Special housing is the answer now.
No, I mean, certainly, there are all kinds of, yeah, I think exactly. You know, some of those barriers make it almost impossible for a person to access housing, right? And so you really got to work on those things. And then, exactly like you're saying, we need opportunities for those folks to get a place that's theirs, where they can stabilize and really succeed. And it's possible. I mean, it's evidence, you know, Hope Springs has come a long ways, I think especially under its new leadership. And it's, you know, I think a great picture that it works. So we, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, thank you, Josh.
My pleasure.
Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. Agenda items 2024-089, 2024-178, and 2024-239 remain tabled or in committee. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council from the council members?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman Williams.
My friend, I got, Corporate Counsel, I got your email. I appreciate you for your response. I just want to get some clarity. So pretty much, there's nothing that can be done until that, and I'm sorry, guys, I'm talking signs, until that contract expires. There's pretty much nothing that can really be changed or done. Whether we're talking about the material on the sign, but what about the location of the sign?
Right. So, so those bus benches are placed pursuant to that agreement, so we can't, we can't regulate that or govern that until the new agreement, which, the old agreement expires in April of 2025.
Yes. Well, that's unfortunate, but okay, because our rules are conflicting right now. And I don't know if you would agree with me with that, because we say nothing should be in those areas. No kind of political. But yet, if you have the money or the connections to get the bus bench, you can get on... get on there, no matter how it reads. Because we can't, because of the court cases, we can't regulate, you know, first amendment rights and people's freedom of expression, which I clearly understand. So, when we go to fix this next year, we may have to look at just, they, they can still do the advertisement. They can still sell the benches, just non-political or something like that is what I'm going to be proposing. Because I have to find a way to make this thing fair. You know, we have folks who are, I mean, it's just dominated right now and that makes it unfair. And then, our staff is going out confronting others, which, which presents a problem then. They're only doing their job too. But then, people are saying, well, the benches are right there. So, why are you making me take mine out? And the benches are right there on the same very city property. I, I'm asking this in public because some are listening. So, now we got the understanding that this, this agreement is in place and there's nothing pretty much we can do until it expires and we take a second look at how we would do our agreement with SMTD or Ace Sign, whichever one.
That's right. There's nothing we can do now and I'm happy to work with you as our new agreement with Ace Sign comes up and, and we can work towards maybe addressing this issue going forward.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Yes. You know, it's crazy. This is signs and I don't want to take up too, too much of the time, but it, it, it definitely appears to be enforced unfairly. But I, I'll ask these questions to Corporation Counsel. Who, who owns the bus seats? SMTD?
The, the benches themselves are, are owned and placed by Ace Sign Company.
Okay. 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 So, Ace owns them. And SMTD, is, is SMTD a government body?
They're their own district, but our agreement with Ace Sign, SMTD is not a part of our agreement. So, we entered this agreement as a, as a courtesy for the citizens of Springfield to, Ace Sign Company agreed to place 175 benches around the city. We agreed that they could utilize our right of way to do so.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion, Alderman Gregory?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any other old business? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. I'm going to ask, he doesn't know this, but Deputy Chief Zumo to come up real quick on new business. There's something exciting you can announce for tomorrow night, right? Or actually Thursday night.
This is Station House Number Six.
Thursday night.
Hello, everybody.
Deputy Chief, what do we have going on Thursday night at the Firefighters Club?
I'm not sure this Thursday. Oh, yeah, the class graduation.
There we go.
Sorry, I had new houses and rigs and everything else going on. So, yeah, this Thursday night, our first class of 2024's graduation, so.
On Thursday night at the Firefighters Club at 5:30. Thought you should all hear that.
Appreciate it. Now I remember.
Thank you, sir.
How many, how many are in the class?
Deputy Chief?
Sorry, I didn't raise it. 14 total. Thank you.
Yeah. How many we got to go to? I'm sorry. How, how many do we got to go to, to be at our comfortable level we're looking at?
We are going to be in a constant.
Constant.
Constant chase to get caught up. I mean, if we.
It's a retirement.
If we continually hire, trying to hire 21 a class and we can stack them, we might get caught up in four years. We're that far behind. And with, you know, retirements that are coming up.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, sorry. Alderman Rockford has a question for you.
Don't we already have a, a group waiting to start?
So, we have a class that starts, I believe, October 2nd or 3rd. And we're hoping to get 21 in that class as well. And then, of course, we have a testing that just concluded that we're in the process of doing. So, that would be to have a list in place for next year.
Anything else, Alderman Rockford?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Zuma. Any other new business that the council has? Okay. Seeing none, then we will go to citizens who signed up to speak ahead of time.
Once again, I'm here. You guys already know my name. My name ain't even important again. I've come not on a really good note. And Mayor, what I'm going to say, I want you to make sure you hear in this body, I want you to hear. This is going to be my last speech. Come to this city council and to all the people who listen out there, I won't be talking anymore and I'll explain later. But I've come up here all these years, giving advice, stating, prophesying, you name it. And for some, it's taken in and for others, it goes by the wayside. But I haven't told you about disruption. Disruption is coming again and it ain't going to be pretty. So, don't say nobody has told you because I'm telling you now. Then the question to you, Mayor, and this whole body, do this body still want to be like the county? Because I remember that whole fight about bars and what time. And we want to be like the county. So, ask yourself, do we still want to do that? Your police department, now, I'm not going to go deep into this because I haven't had my conversation with the chief and I know he's not here. But what I'm going to tell you is, I ain't came up here being real supportive of the police department, but then there's stuff that's going on that ever since Massey been shot in the face, my phone is just blowing up. Them jump out boys or what they called out on the street, it's going to be bad news if it don't get turned down. We can't wait to see what's going to happen. Now, you can have a talk with the chief and tell him what I said because I don't even want to have that discussion at this table if you want to know, but we can't keep doing. Them jump out boys cannot keep doing what they've been doing. They're violating people's rights. There's some very angry people out there. I'm done trying to be peaceful about it. People are talking about me because I come up here and talk to y'all and they still getting mistreated. That's a gut punch to me. A gut punch. Here I am, I'm thinking I'm, I'm helping and doing something and trying to keep it calm and peaceful and this is happening at night. And I haven't asked you guys to have these meetings for the community. I don't know where we at, but we need to get something going. There's some things that's getting ready to pop off. I don't know if you know, but we got to, we got to do something before it gets ugly. That's all I'm asking, tame it down. Ain't no reason why they should be checking tents on vehicles when we got CWLP vehicles tented out. We got state vehicles tenting out, federal building, uh, vehicles tented and our own police vehicles tented. No reason why people on the east side should be even having these discussions with police officers about their tent. That's hypocritical. And I'm going to leave that about the police department there. So, if you think everything had calmed down, you mistakenly wrong. And for all y'all that's been quiet since Sonja, you white males who haven't said a word, now, if things go left, I don't want to hear nothing then either. I don't want to hear nothing because then that's going to bring me back here. But I'm done talking to the city council. I'm going to leave with this saying. A bottle of water can be a dollar at the supermarket, $2 at the gym, $3 at a movies, and $6 on a plane. Same water. Only thing that changed its value was the place. I'm in the wrong place. You got to know your worth.
Mr. Johnson, there are two Aldermen who signed up to speak. If you could give us a moment. Alderman Williams?
So, so, you know, James, me and you have not always agreed, but, but I want to say, I think you commented to the city council and now you're at this point, how you feel is scary. I, I've seen at least three of the videos. I'm hearing several out there. I've seen at least three of them. And I, and I'm concerned. I, I, I just, I mean, I know I should be. We all, if they knew, they would be too. But I'll just say this. I'm hoping there's not like no kind of national incident, but I saw the videos and, and I, and we got a scheduled meeting with the chief, with Corporate Counsel, with, and, and we're, we're going to try to figure this out. And, and I, and I know it may be a little too late, maybe, but, but we are trying to do something about it and contain it. So, you're not being ignored is all I wanted to say.
Appreciate it.
You're not being ignored. I can't promise what's, what's going to come out of the meetings, but I'm going to make sure I do my job of saying, oh, this, this is dangerous. This, that last video had me literally shaking in my house like, oh, because we could have had another death easily. And, and I'm so glad it didn't happen, but I will say, trying to understand what they're trying to do and understanding what the community is saying and, and, and it's in action, we just got to get it fixed. And, and we're going to try to work on it.
We can't have the dog incident. I don't know if you've seen that video. That, that one is not going to go well. We, we can't have that anymore. And I mean that on everything I stand on. That one is not going to go well if it gets out there and people really see what happens.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mayor. James, I'm glad you did come tonight. I did watch the press conference. I watched both press conferences. I talked to Ardell from, from, from the get-go. And, and, you know, I've spoken to chief, as you have, about the different videos that, that we've seen plus more, that I'm sure that, that, that the ones I've seen. As Roy, as Roy said, we do have a meeting with chief and, and we have presented some, some things, some things that we've heard and, you know, I've, I've known Sam for a long time and, and, you know, we've talked about a lot of things. So, so we're going to try to do some things. I, I will say that we were four years ago at a point of trying to address some things before. So, we'll, you know, we don't have any problems looking at things. And every time somebody has reached out to me about issues with policing, we have sent that up the ladder with chief. Now, once it gets there with chief, what, what the individuals decide to do with it, whether that's continue on and file the complaint like they need to, so it can be addressed and, and really, really have, have an internal investigation. That's what I would like to see more of. I would, because when I go to fix things like the Community Relations Department and their problems and not mean the things, and we go to look at that, well, they don't have no complaints. So, for whatever reason, you know, that, that process needs to happen as well. Once, once a lawyer is involved, guess what? That's us out of it as far as talking, right?
And I understand that.
But, but beforehand, yeah, we, we, I don't have no problem, lawyer has no problem, Keisha has no problem really seeing that these things are addressed when they come to us, but they have to come to us. So, I've seen them. We've already, you know, put some things down that we're going to talk about way before those things were produced and the press conferences and all those things. So, we are, we are with y'all. What I don't particularly like is the acknowledgement or lack of acknowledgement that, that we have even helped. We've sat down with many, many meetings. I mean, for years, we've sat down many, many times with a few of those, those people at in those groups when nobody else will. So, so we, we're here, we're, 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 we're trying to work with everyone and trying to meet with everybody, bro. But at times, we get sick of saying, people, you know, talking about, oh, they ain't doing nothing because we are and we meet with y'all and we, we, we're, we're doing what we're supposed to do, but don't really want to speak on that too. So, then it, it must us sit back.
And that's the, that's the scary part because they feel like nobody's doing that.
Shit, I go through the same thing, James. James, I just got pulled over for tinted windows. I was in here raising hell about it. I mean, I, I'm going through the same things, bro.
Right, I know. But you, you going through the same thing and there's hundreds more out there that's going through the same thing.
Absolutely.
And we need all of them to start coming forth.
Absolutely.
And that's what I would like y'all to do, start requesting for all of those people who have been violated or feel like, they all got to start coming forth now. And all of us got to start working together.
Absolutely.
That's the key word.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alderman purchase, I got to speak to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I'm going to echo what Roy and Sean said on everything that they said, but when you said that, you know, we're putting the meetings together. So, they just told you the first step was meeting with Chief Scarlett next Monday. So, we got to, we didn't seen all the videos, but we got to hear what's going on. How did we get to that point? Because sometimes we only get certain clips of it. So, we want to see the whole thing and see what's, what's happening. How does it get to that point? And that's what I've learned with understanding to say that. I'm not saying nothing is okay and I'm not saying that we should have patience neither because when I see the force on somebody's neck, like they said, we, we could have had another George Floyd situation. So, I want to make sure that we understand what's going on. And then, two things you brought up and Sean said the same thing, when you don't see any, anything being turned in, I think our community may not understand the process and what we should be doing. So, our goal is to call a meeting with the police department, with the union, and we're inviting Noble in too, so we can just explain how you do things.
We need John Milhouse there too.
That's, that's fine. Whatever, whatever it is that you all want. But we also need to make sure we got respect too when we have a community meeting. Just like you said, you supportive of the police department, I am too. So, I want to make sure that we don't have an outrage or we have any disrespecting going on. We have to set some boundaries, but we want to bring the community together. And now, we're, we're steady getting calls. We're steady getting videos sent to all three of us together to watch. So, it is disheartening, but we, we, we just have to have some understanding. So, please continue to let the community know that we're working on things and also push for everyone to work together. I think what Sean just said hit it on the head. You got people, everybody is doing something different and, and saying things differently and then you start to get that misunderstanding or miscommunication too.
Can we, is there a way we can expedite this community meeting?
I would say the first step is just for us to get the meeting out the way on Monday and then we can talk about what's the next step of getting all three of those entities together.
All right. Well, the chief already know, I had my meeting with him already. So, if he wants to share what we talked about, that's fine. But y'all, for the community's sake, we got to get that meeting.
That's our number one priority. I'm a female. When I, when we had the female come up to me and Sean in the park and then they showed us the video as well, just sometimes we can be a little hard, but also too, we got to acknowledge our people too. We, we can antagonize and we, I didn't seen them cuss an officer out in their face like you, you wouldn't even want to get cussed out like the, the way I see some of these people cussing them out.
That's a piece of cake. They was literally, in one of those videos, they was afraid and they had every right because they was closing in on them.
And then I, the last thing I want to say, Mayor, is that me and Sean both said it up here. James, we have to be careful. We, we're the young people. We connect with people in the community and when we're up here speaking, some of them get mad and it might not be safe for us. And we sitting up here speaking up on the behalf of our community and getting people talking to us or getting people shouting at us and we have to be careful about that. So, I just encourage you too, when you up here to, you don't challenge us disrespectfully, but just to, to keep it just like really calm because it, it affects us too.
Yeah. Yeah, but we, the, the ones that are out here right now, just stepping on these streets, we, we gonna protect the ones we need to protect. So just give us a minute to get in their ear and to deal with it. Cause see, we got some black on black crime that we have to deal with also.
Yeah.
But it's gonna take us and not them jump out boys snatching people out their cars and slamming them. See, that, that's gonna trigger something. Cause the wrong vehicle and the wrong person, then we right back where we were a month ago.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next person who signed up.
Mayor, one more thing.
Alderman Williams.
James, so I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Um, you mentioned the dogs. I, I, I'll just say, um, I, I, you know, when someone's handcuffed and, and a dog's allowed. I, I, I know the rage. I, I, I know what's happening, but the answer.
That's history coming back, man.
But the answer can't be to turn these other dogs, these Rockwellers, onto the police to, to do the police dog. So if they were to kill that police dog, and I'm glad they didn't, but what I'm just saying, when they hollering, well, you ain't the only one that got a dog. We got, you know, that's escalation.
Yeah.
So then, when, when, when the officer or whoever it was said, well, and then I'll shoot your dog. Then he said, then I'll shoot you. Mayor, that's where, that's where it went. That's how, that's how serious this got. And all I'm saying to you is if you would ask or, or, or relay to them that, that's not the answer, to have their dog kill the police dog, cause the police dog bit somebody that was already in handcuffs. That's, that's just not the answer.
I agree. And, but they are trained to de-escalate. And once things get the way that one got, it gotta be de-escalated. And if they have to be the bigger person and step back, bring it down, because if not, it's gonna go. It just didn't go that night. But if it keeps happening and keeps happening, them crowds are gonna get bigger, them attitudes are gonna get stronger, and then it goes. And I'm trying to say that we are the, the fellas that's out here right now and having these meetings and these press conferences, we trying to do something, cause we don't wanna see it. But we tired of it. So all I'm asking is everybody turn it, tame it down, cause it's not gonna be good. So I understand what you're saying, and I'll make sure I pass that on too.
I appreciate it.
So the people that need to know, back it down.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak in advance, Alice Ramey.
Oh, no.
You're waiting? Are you not coming up tonight?
No, what I got to say, this is not the only answer to have it. Cause I feel like he does. The disrespect.
Do you wanna come to the microphone or no? You get a yes or no choice.
I'm Alice Ramey. I know that in our neighborhood, for over 70 years, we've always had some type of thing going on. But when you start to threaten a police dog and you wanna shoot this one and you wanna shoot that one, and it continues to grow in, but it doesn't do it right then, but it does it some other time in a bigger way. And I believe Roy knows about it and Sean knows about it. But when you don't have the respect and be able to talk to them in a format that they understand, okay? Because we had an incident in our neighborhood and I didn't get a chance to tell Roy about it. But the people that are moving out of one house had a dog that almost bit one of the other girls because that dog was trained to protect the girl that it was supposed to be. And we could have had an accident there or something terrible happened. I have a little dog too. At one time I had five of them, two police dogs. But it was the idea that they were trained. And we can't have Rockwellers. At one time, our neighborhood was required not to have them. They could not have them at all. They, if you move in with a Rockweller, you gotta move out. Because there, some of them are not trained, some of them are, are different. But I feel for these people that have this. I feel for the officers and the kids getting pulled out of their cars. I've been there and it happened to me because I had dark, uh, glass, uh, windows. But it's the idea that if you are afraid to say something and kinda calm it down, then you need to look at yourself in the mirror and see, am I the one causing it? Or am I the one not doing what I'm supposed to do? And I think everyone around this horseshoe at one time or another has seen a video or has seen the incident or something, and they didn't know what to do or how to do it. Roy, thank you because you are a good alderman. Sean, you are too. All of you are. You all take your community to heart and you all need to have a community. All of these people need to be up here and you all need to know what is going on, how they feel about it, what is causing this problem? Because if you don't, 1908 is gonna be a puppet cake, okay? Just a pancake to compare what's gonna happen here. Amen.
The next person signing up to speak is Alan Reine. We're on to seven then.
On to seven.
Just kidding. The people that signed up for zoning didn't.
I'm gonna congratulate you, and I'm gonna stick to my five minutes even though my alderman isn't here, but I know that's important to him. Um, the last time I spoke, I think I was, uh, about three hours in. So I got a little more time this time. Not me three hours, you guys three hours. So Alan Reine, 31, 21, Red Bud, Ward One. He's not here today. Uh, all of you on this horseshoe, you have put your name out in front of people. You've asked them to vote for you. You've asked the voters for their trust and support. You have strong personalities and you're willing to stand before others and say, follow me. Traditionally, those are some of the same traits we look for in firefighters. None of you with that attitude or with that personality would have passed the recent aptitude exam because there was a large portion of it had to do with your personality. So feel free to answer by show of hands. Some of you already know the answer because we spoke out front. If I see a coworker doing something unethical or illegal, I will tell my immediate supervisor. You either agree or strongly agree. Of course.
If I answered it downstairs.
If you answered strongly agree, you got that question wrong. Explain that to me, right? Saying I lost my notes. So yeah, I would put strongly agree, of course. Those subjective questions are why the majority of the 220 people of the 350 who took that exam are no longer eligible. Because their personality did not fit a predetermined profile of what someone else thinks a firefighter should be. Seventeen of our explorers or CACC kids are gone. One of our best recruitment tools, kids who are taught to be strong leaders, gone. Thousands of dollars we pay to develop these future leaders only to have them tossed away. All of these candidates have been dropped at a portion of the exam that only counts for 40%. The written test is only 40%. Your oral interview is 60%. There are six steps to becoming a firefighter. Aptitude, are you capable of learning? That's all we wanna know. Morality and ethics, can he navigate through multi-part questions? Or can she answer questions that are in line with our core values? That's the oral interview. Three through six, mostly out of our hands. Physical ability, a clean background, and are they healthy? But then you sit with a professional for four hours in a psychological exam. The city apparently thinks a 50-question personality exam in the context of an already stressful written examination is how we determine who will make a good firefighter. If this company had advertised, we flunk half the people that take the test, would you have hired them? More importantly, did anybody ask that question? To be clear, a four-hour psych exam conducted by a professional who meets one-on-one with you flunks very few people statistically, certainly not 60%. So can you imagine if I'm a kid, I know nothing about the fire department, my dad wasn't the fire chief, I've got no inside knowledge, I got a 54 on this test, and I think I'm an idiot? You're never getting that kid back. He is done. She is done. They will not take that test again because they don't know that they only flunked because some random person come up with what is the personality that we're looking for. I've spoken to three who have passed, good kids, hope they get the job. All of them said they avoided strong opinions. I know what Corporation Council's gonna do. They're gonna lead with, this is a nationally recognized company, these are vetted questions, these behavioral traits, blah, blah, blah. But this, the list is endless. I do not know how you can defend something, and I hope at least behind the scenes, you're fixing it. My strong advice to anyone who wants to be a Springfield firefighter, if you're brave enough to take that first step, find another city. Because this one keeps moving the target. The fact that from one year to the next has completely different results is appalling. No one else can explain how people who were top performers on the last list failed this one. Every question on the exam should directly correlate to the job of a firefighter. If any question is subjective, the company needs to show how it correlates to the job of a firefighter. How is it a good predictor of job performance? If that study exists, the Civil Service Commission should ask for those results to be vetted by a professional before they certify this list. I will end this the same as I did the last time. Are you setting this up for failure or success? Recruitment is hard enough without putting up more roadblocks. As fire chief, I wanted people with good moral character, throw in some empathy, some trainability, and we mold them into good firefighters. Last thing I gotta say is I fired a FOIA over a week ago. I've heard nothing so far. Not a thing. That's not okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Reine. Hang on, there's two alderpeople who signed up to speak and noted that I let you go over by a minute almost.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold mine for when the actual chief is there, thank you.
Okay. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. And Alan, thanks for coming in. Uh, we, we talked about this. I, I will tell you, the thing that I think my biggest concern with this is, is one that you absolutely highlighted is our explorers students. Um, and it's not just that the city invests time and money. We also invest, um, kind of dream building. Someone who looks, who goes through that kind of training, and we've already heard tonight that, that our recruitment numbers are low, that we have a dire need to recruit good, strong, quality candidates and candidates who've gone through that program or they get that hands-on training. Um, if you don't follow them on Facebook, it's fabulous, the things that they do out there. To see that that part of the test could have been really instrumental in kicking kids, those, especially those kind of kids. And I, I'm sorry, I don't know if the young men with you were in explorers, but I just wanna say, I do think we have some EMTs who were in this, this class who didn't make it through, and so that, that's a concern. That said, I also find it's, I mean, and you, you pointed this out, it is critically important that our first responders have the mental ability and that, that psychological profile to do this job in a way that provides services and provides them in a, in an equitable and, and fair and responsive manner. That's what that four-hour exam is for.
Absolutely. I 100% agree with you.
And I appreciate you bringing that up tonight. Mayor, I do hope that we're continuing to look at this test. I've, I, I have some significant concerns about how this class has rolled out and, and what we're kind of seeing with, with how, how much that list got cut. Because, um...
I've never.
People have high expectations of...
I've never. I talked to fire chiefs all over the state. I have not talked to anybody that has this problem.
And, and I will say, we have, we have a very high-class fire department that we are understandably and appropriately very proud of, and we want to continue to build that as a strong department that gives the services to this community that we deserve. Uh, we've just expanded by adding a new, a new station. That's not gonna reduce our need for more, for more staff, so.
What you said earlier.
It's, it's important that we, that we keep those standards high, that we're not dropping the bar, but we're also not cutting qualified people off at the knees before they even get started.
Unnecessary roadblocks. Unnecessary roadblocks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I, and I don't know if this question's for you, chief, but either Corporation Council or HR Director, how long has this test, um, that we currently use for the firefighters been in, been rolling?
The HR director can answer that.
This particular test, as far as the company's been around, and I, I can't tell you the exact years. We have, this is our first time to use them for our fire entry. We went through the RFP process. Um, I, I would have different statistics than the ones that were mentioned.
Right. Well, I'm, I, so I, I, I can say that the personality portion, I, I agree with, you know, everything else to, to ensure that we got people capable of doing our, our, the duties of a firefighter. But the personality test, we all, you know, agreed strongly, strongly agree to something unethical and, and, you know, its standard is, you know, just to agree. So it's sort of, it's sort of a tricky test. I mean, it, it sounds...
Well, I'm uncertain where, cause I don't have any information. I mean, haven't received any information that would indicate, um, any particular answers to any questions as being right or wrong. So that would be information that I don't have. But I would say that the behavioral predictions are all questions. So to create the test, I'm answering one question, I'm sorry, I put my back. To create the, the questions, the process that the company goes through is they do surveys for the knowledge, the attitude, the skills that are necessary to be successful as a firefighter. And they did those studies, um, in a number of communities nationwide. They then get those, they create, and every behavior that they're looking for is tied to one of those knowledge, skills, or abilities. Two that I know are stress tolerance, um, team orientation. Um, and again, they're all tied for any behavior that they're predicting. And then within those pieces, they do the test, they look for adverse impact, they also do research to be able to say, is this predictive of successful behavior? And follow up with that. And then they vet it, and we did a job analysis locally to ensure that it was appropriate for Springfield. Our pass rate was, we had 158 people who passed, we had 68 people who did not pass. So it's a 70, 30% pass rate, and the scores varied, the highest score was 95. I didn't look at the lower score. Um, we saw no disparate impact on any of the protected classes. They do have a psychologist that vets the answers at the end and is completed, and our test was vetted.
So what, what, let me ask you, what made us go from our last, was our contract up with our last testing vendor?
Our, our contract was up with our last one, yes.
Okay. And how long is this contract?
I don't remember.
Okay. Um, no, that's fine. I'll, I'll get that information. I mean, I, I, I guess it would be, gotta look at, look at the differences as, as far as how the old test, um, how many people made it through that, as far as our, our, um, recruitment and, and things in our nature versus this. Cause I, 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 I have to be honest, it's sort of strange that that question would be wrong, you know, strongly.
Again, that's a particular question and a particular answer and some grading information that I, I'm not confirming.
But if it is confirmed, would, would you agree that that's a strange, wrong answer? Would you be taken back on your test?
Would I be? What, please?
If you were taking the test and you missed a question like that, would you be like, I, I...
I think we're, what she's saying is we're assuming things that we don't know yet.
Okay, well...
I don't know the answer to that to be able to have, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you. I guess the, the question I have is, um, if we can look at the people that passed the previous test, you would think that they would be able to pass this test, uh, because of the knowledge. The test shouldn't be that big of a change to where if, if I get, let's say I get a 85 on the previous test, I would think that I would at least be able to get an 80 on this test because, I mean, I didn't know, we, it seems to me, we've had good, good, uh, classes come through, we get the firefighters in, we don't wash a lot out. Now, I could be, be wrong, um, but the, I guess that's what I wanna see. I, you know, take a, take a look at, let's say, I don't know how many people took the test last time that had to take it this time, but let's look at 10, 10 or 15 people and see, see what they did. Because if, if they all collectively dropped substantially, then I would question the validity, validity of the test. And, and I don't know, you know, the example, that kind of question, you know, that's, that's a question where there, there's really, the only bad answers are, no, I'm not gonna turn someone in at all. That's, that's the, that's the kind of people we don't want. And, and I mean, and again, we're just, right. But, but my point is, I think we need to look at, to get a, uh, get a list of people that took the prior test, find out what their scores were, and compare them on this to see, because if collectively they, they've, they've all dropped substantially, we got a problem. And I'm, I'm concerned that we're gonna, we're gonna lose good candidates. And I'm, I'm concerned that we're gonna, we're gonna lose good candidates. And, you know, I, I, I get doing an RFP. I'm a big proponent of RFP, uh, for, for, you know, most things, so.
I, I do want to go back to IO, IO Solutions, which is our testing company. We have worked with them prior. They were a prior testing company that the city had engaged previously. So, um, they are somebody we have some experience with, not only for this entry. So as I was thinking through that, when I said how long, I know we also used them prior, uh, to this year. For, for this one, this is our first time with this contract. So your question made me think of a clarification.
Thank you.
Alderman Carlson.
Yeah, I just want to ask Corporation Counsel about the FOIA. I mean, former fire chief and a city employee. I think you had the answer about the FOIA he asked about, so I'm just curious about that.
So the FOIA was responded to today, well within the time limit.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we're, we're closing that out. There were over thirty-two hundred emails that were a part of that FOIA, so.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Anything else, Alderman Carlson?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Alderwoman Conley.
Next to you, Alan.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. And Director, thank you. I, and I apologize, you're on my list of people. I really, really meant to reach out to you before now. So I, I try not to throw too much nuance at the meetings, but, um-
Little pop quizzes.
Right. I certainly would appreciate your, your review of, of the situation, and a little more in-depth. I do have to ask, did the prior tests have this kind of agree, disagree questions about personality kind of issues?
There were, there were behavioral questions on the prior one. Actually, I think, and I would have to check this, but I think this one has more cognitive questions than behavioral questions. I think that mix is actually more cognitive on the new test than it was in the prior. I would want to verify that one, though.
Yeah, if you could, just some follow-up. Because I, I think Alderman Hanauer kind of, you know, really brought up a good point. If we had people who've already taken the test, and we can compare those scores, and I realize it's not the same day, and it's not the same circumstances, but, uh, you know, a cognitive test shouldn't change that much. And, and I do, again, like I said, I, I do have concerns that, again, with those explorer group of kids, that if we're trying to develop a core group of, of really Springfield-area residents to come be part of our fire department, I, I do find it concerning that this early stage of the game narrows that, that many out. Because it does, even thirty percent seems fairly high when they've got so many more hoops to jump through before they get to, you know, what we have Thursday night, which is, you know, a graduating class. So thank, thank you for coming in, thank you for answering questions.
Right. I, one of the pieces is that, I know we have that in our, our rate of getting people through was one of the reasons we were looking for that heavier cognitive weight. By "we," I mean the group that was looking at the RFPs.
And I, okay, we, we'll talk about that maybe offline.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Director, I appreciate you coming up and answering the questions this evening. Chief, thanks for bringing these things forward. We all have the same goal, I think, and that's to get the most qualified people and as many people taking the test as possible. I'm, I'm just disheartened that the numbers have gone, both for police and fire entry over the years, is down as far as they are, they are. But the numbers that the chief gave, and the numbers you gave, what I heard at least, I won't, I don't, we don't have to get into this too deep here, but they weren't consistent. You could just, and I trust you will, if you could just take a hard look at it, and give us kind of a summary of how many people took it, what the wash rate is, or fail rate has been so far. Compare it to the last few times, and that way we can have something to look at and discuss. And I, I, I know you'll do that. I know you take it seriously, I know the fire department does as well. And Mayor, thank you.
Absolutely.
Right, absolutely. Oh, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, do we get a motion for adjournment? All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Can't imagine anyone being opposed.